Okay. Good evening and welcome to tonight's April regular meeting of the USD 298 Board of Education. Welcome you all and welcome visitors. Before we adopt the agenda, I would like to add an item 15A board discussion at the end if we could. If everyone's okay with adding that, then I would accept a motion to adopt the agenda.
We accept the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Gina, seconded by Jason to adopt the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Okay. Delegations? If we have any consent agenda? Have a chance to look over that. We've approved the minutes of the regular meeting of March 7th. We have minutes from the special meeting of April 1st. We'll have to approve the payment of the bills. Approve the treasuries report. Approve the clerks report. And we have the Lincoln County Rec Report, Addendum 1, in your packet.
All right, we accept the consent agenda.
Thank you Gina.
I'll second.
Thanks Nate. Motion by Gina, seconded by Nate to approve the items listed on the consent agenda consisting of: The approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 7th, 2022. The special board meeting of April 1st, 2022. Approval of the payment of bills. Approve the treasuries report. Approve the clerks report. And approve the Lincoln County Rec Commission Report. Report, Addendum 1. Any other discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Okay. Next up, we have the community access policy review.
So it's, okay. So, as you know, we had discussed this recently because our policy wasn't being followed as far as having access to, to our facilities after hours. There were students who were using adults' key cards to get in. There was some pushback when I shut that down, but I want to show you why I did that. If you could. So this isn't very long, but as you can see, the bleachers are pushed in. We have kids dancing up on top and we have somebody recording. Word was they were making fun TikTok videos, which I'm sure we all like to do that in our spare time. The problem is that creates a tremendous liability for the district. And it is my job to protect the board and the district from liabilities like this. So without some concrete policy that the board can live with, understanding liability issues, access to our facilities. I just shut it down so we didn't have somebody fall off the top of the bleachers and break their neck. And board members, you are liable individually as well as a board, and I wanted to protect you. So now we can have that discussion about what you think a community access policy could be, should be, or should not be.
It could not be that.
And to refresh your memory, any underage individual who wants to come in according to current policy must have a parent with them. No friends, no, a kid, the parent. And that's what was being violated there. I have been in there several times since we started looking at security tape and looking at scanned card reports. And it is a common practice that there are no adults there. Here's what breaks my heart. The kids want to be at school. That's awesome. They want to shoot baskets and they want to play and they're not running away from our facilities. But kids are kids. And we just can't take that sort of risk. That's my fear, especially in the weight room. If they're screwing around in the weight room and they don't have a spotter, they don't have whatever, the proper lifting technique and that weight comes down on them, or they're overzealous without a spotter. Yeah, by themselves. And I have seen video of students in the weight rooms by themselves. Individuals not even with somebody working out. That is, I'm sorry, that's dangerous and it puts us in a terrible position. So, that's why it needed to be addressed. That's why there was no access.
In the current policy, what is the repercussion for violating the signed agreement?
Cards?
We don't, we don't have a written repercussion.
I feel like that's probably one of the first things we need to address is if, as a parent, I come in and I sign the release saying I'm going to take on responsibility of having a card, what's the repercussions if I allow one of my children to take my card and go to school? I mean, that right there solves a lot of problems because if we say, we have evidence that these five kids were in there with their parents' cards, that's five people who know they're not card.
And I would say this, it is, you know, $10 for forever.
And I don't know that that's high enough either.
There's not enough skin in that game.
No.
And I was curious too, and it's probably a revoke the card, they come back, they buy another $10 card and they go back. It's not a, you know, a cycle thing and.
Well, with the kids that were there, they could have just used somebody else's card the next time.
Yes.
And they were like, I have them there, so just.
Yes, yes, continue on.
But I think at that point, we have to come up with some sort of policy that says, you know, my kid was in there with your kid and your kid and your kid, and they used my card, but they were all there knowing they weren't supposed to be, so where are we at?
The alternative is just shutting it off.
And I'm not sure that's, I don't really want to go.
Another alternative would be figuring out how to staff it. Right? I can't staff positions we have now during the day.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's, I've ruled this around.
I would just hate to see community access shut down. I know, I've heard from a lot of people within our community who feel the same way. They don't want to see it shut down because there are people who are using it the way that it's intended to be used. And it's unfortunate that the kids are going to be kids and see how far they can push it.
Well, if we would say no access for a year, has some teeth in our agreement for those cards involved in any kind of.
That's, that's kind of what I was curious about and I, I had some thoughts I put down here, but I mean, you rent an apartment or you rent anywhere, you have like a year-long agreement or even if you had a gym membership. We've never had a gym around here, so I haven't had one, but if, if we had a, say you had to have a $250 card to get in there and you bought that at enrollment, they were offered at enrollment, and if at any point you violated that and it was, your card was pulled, you were found to be in violation of policy, you forfeit your $250 plus you can't get a card until enrollment up next year. And I wonder if, if raising the price would, it comes out at like $10 a month or a little bit more, you know, $240. $240 didn't seem like a round number, but you know, you could go there for $20 a month. And then if you wanted to, if they obeyed everything or went everywhere, you could get that $200 back and it would just cost you $50. It would be like a security deposit. And if you wanted the card, it would just continue to roll until you graduated and then you would get that back. Or until you decided you didn't want the card anymore. So it could be a one-time investment if you treated it right. But that was just a scenario I had thought. And if you're bound.
I don't have a problem with increasing it and I understand where you're going, but with the community that we have, I think possibly maybe prorating some of that based on free and reduced and making some concessions there on cost. I just, especially $250 upfront could be a big hit for a family.
I think most of the people in our community who truly do need the community access fees wouldn't be able to necessarily cough up $250 at enrollment when we're already paying all of the other enrollment fees. But I think increasing the cost is going to deter.
It would deter people from just coming in randomly, getting a $10 card and not caring who used it or how it went, so.
I agree. I think, I like that idea. I also agree that $100 upfront would probably be difficult for a lot of the families in our district, just right upfront to come up with that. So finding that heavy medium. And, and with all of this, with the community access, in my mind, it's been many years since I got my card, but I just thought if, if I gave my card and somebody used it and there were any issues, my card would just be revoked or I would get a warning or something. In my mind, I just thought there would be some sort of steps and repercussions. Not just, you know, it shuts the whole thing down. And I understand what you needed to. We have too many questions right now with what's going on. We need to get it clarified, but.
I, I think I really thought that there was some sort of policy in place that said if you violated the agreement that you just signed, you didn't have a card anymore.
I would say this, you know, when we refinished that floor the summer that I started here, I think it was $18,000 to strip that floor down and recode it. We have a significant investment. We have a $10,000 rubber floor in the weight room. We have a really significant investment and we're trying to make our properties better every chance we can and that sort of open, the sort of open door policy we have right now just isn't functional.
You have anything that you would add, Eric?
I, I think that the community thing is great and I hate to punish the kids that actually use it correctly. The problem is, is I don't have time, I know Mr. Frenchall doesn't have time to sit and watch footage to see if kids are abusing it. And so I don't know, it was just a fluke deal that we caught that. And so if someone does get hurt, the liability is on the district is astronomical.
But this, but what, it was a fluke deal, we caught this, but I'll bet we spent
Hours.
Four to five hours apiece scanning the card records with video to, this was not an isolated incident. It was, oh my God, here's another time and here's another time and here's another time and another time. And that, it was all of a sudden doing the research. It was like, we got to figure this out. This was the scariest one as far as somebody getting hurt.
Well, and I'll ditto that. Like we are spending hours, our janitors are spending hours trying to get the floor. They've scrubbed every black mark off. I don't know how many hours that took them. They've been buffing the, or not buffing, scrubbing the floor regularly and it's just hard to keep it clean. I, I don't know. I, I'm very torn because we do have kids that use it correctly. Even though there have been adults in there, they have just literally went up, watched and played basketball. They didn't change their shoes. So I guess I don't know how important is it, how important is your gym floor? I don't know.
Well, it's really too bad the grade school gym isn't easier to shut off because we know that floor is in tough shape and it would be a really good place for kids to
Actually, that is very true. Yeah. If they're going to be on the gym floor, they should be on that one.
And is there not a way to, I mean, we have an expandable gate there already, correct?
I don't think there's. It's just down towards the lunchroom, right on that ramp is the only place they're going.
Is there not hard to put in?
No.
So would it be worthwhile looking at maybe investing in an expandable gate that could be locked? And opening up that facility? I mean, it doesn't really change what we're discussing now as far as people violating the agreement that they've signed.
The thing I see there is there's, there's so much more to explore there. There's the stage. There's the crow's nest in the stage. There's under the, the, like the ship, the locker rooms. There's so much more to explore in the elementary school than there is at the high school. Which if there were, you know.
Then you have the balcony access, which creates another access problem. And the concession stand area.
That would be the gym to use though, because that floor is shot. And so I would definitely like that better than the one where you.
We charge to pay, but $2.50 is prohibitive to people. If we.
I was thinking 40.
40?
I mean, that's more than what it is and it's enough that it's an investment. I mean, 40 to 50 dollars. And I think, you know, if we could make concessions based on free and reduced, I think that would probably be a way to go because if we do have somewhere for them to go, then you know, the big issue is making sure that there's an adult with them. And you know, short of doing a morning, morning review of the video to see what, everything that took place the night before, I don't really know how you enforce it.
I don't think the $100 idea is, try to assume you.
Is there a current way to link that to Power School or anything so they could do like an online payment? It's $100, she's split it up quarterly.
We just have Can Pay where people pay online.
Okay. I don't know how the key card system works. If there's a way to go in and say, you know, it's good. Well, I know you guys say it's only good during these hours or whatever, but you know, we paid on January 1st and so if you haven't paid again by March 31st, it should be.
It could be shut off.
Right.
The car could be shut off. There's going to take somebody that would have to go through and see which ones. Yep. There would be, there is bookkeeping for someone to check that.
It should probably be less cars that people would actually set up to do that. I mean, $100 sounds like a lot, but it's not what it used to be.
I'm sure a lot of people would pay that at once, but for the people whom we need.
Yeah, which would lead down the amount of people that were having to watch for four. But then would you go with a hard one-time violation, you're done, or with the card?
For you.
I mean, it's become a problem and I think you just have to say this is the line. Cross it and this is the way it's going to be.
I would, I would be in favor of the discount for the regular people because hazard's a hazard no matter who you are. I'd be favored for the house the same no matter who you are.
Turning the lights on or the same amount for whoever's.
If we need some teeth in it, there won't be as much teeth in it on a cheap one. Just something like that.
I think if you stay at 100 and you give them the option to pay on a quarterly basis.
Well, I think we're rather flexible on payment.
Right.
Just don't ask, you know, our school to bend over backwards for 300 different kinds of things. I mean, this is a privilege.
Yeah, right. No, we don't want to limit it. Access just to people that can afford it.
We don't want to make it prohibitive.
Yeah. Because that's not what this is about. It's not about people that can or can't afford it. It's, should be available to everybody. I think it's available to anybody.
Can I add something else? So, and I just, because our janitors that work at night, we've had doors left open, like outside doors. They didn't shut them and there was stuff in there propped open. And so that's a, I don't know if you, I'm just saying if you're going to include that as a violation, you need to think of everything. Had he not been there that evening, like if it was a Friday evening, I think would have been left open. Well, I usually drive through occasionally, but I might not have caught it. Just to make sure you're thinking of everything that could potentially be a violation. And I don't know if you want to include that or not, but it definitely could have caused some problems.
I don't think we need to name every little thing because we're never going to be.
No.
A lot of people have their own responsibility on sometimes.
So we just have to word it as any and all possible.
Well, you know.
Because that would definitely be also an issue.
But they shouldn't be propping doors up open anyway.
No, yes, at all. So if you just put that in there, like you can not prompt doors open if you use your key to get in.
Dropping doors open and jumping on measures. Using equipment in violation of accordance being in the weight room alone. Do we want to add that?
I think that that's a fair thing to put in there.
I think a few of the tables and then.
Any other discretion? Discretion of administration as to other violations or people leaving the weight room.
That's the really big risk.
Maybe that's the suspension that, you know, comes from all of this is that that goes away in the gym and everything.
Yeah, we talked about that before, as in that there's a few responsible adults that are, that use it that would still probably like to use it, but having access cut off to the people who bring in their kids and let the kids just stay, yeah. I don't want to see some child get killed by weights falling over on them or them pounding over on themselves when there's, man, there's nobody there to help them.
Is there a risk of allowing the sheriff's office to continue with that until there's some other place in town to lift weights or?
That is the discretion of the board.
I know that was discussion last night.
I think we have four, four sheriffs that, and they, they just go, they, they might be in there lifting at 2:00 whenever their shift is done or before shift or they're just kind of, kind of a different breed of cat with their schedule and they just do it when they can do it. But they specifically asked if they could be outside of the normal hours just because of their livelihood and I agreed to that.
I feel like, I think that's there is okay to let them.
But is there a way you can shut the weight room off from the rest of the gym?
It has a key card also.
Is it on the, the west side? Is that where they access in?
No, they have to go through the hallway down to the weight room and then scan again.
On the doors of the weight room.
And is it a different scan card than the one for the door?
It can be coded to, you could choose one only.
Nobody under 18 in the weight room or something like that, you know, just adults only. That would cover.
But then parents could go.
Right.
I would say you just allow, if, if the sheriffs come in and ask for the card, they, they get the card that's coded there. Otherwise, nobody does. For now.
Well, if, if you, if the board as a whole would reach a consensus, I could reach out to KSB and have their lawyer kind of write a policy if I can give them an outline of cost, violation, things like that. I think it's going to be a legal issue. And I think it's probably something that none of us should, should try to offer. But just tell them, here's our goal. Here's the, kind of the framework. Can you make it work? So they can go into our policy book.
If we, if we go that route, I'd be in favor of until they come in and read that and sign that, not reactivating the cards that are currently out.
Yeah, we have to get some control over.
I mean, you gotta, we, we have to restart, but at some point. And so I think this, this would be it. They could come in and sign it and until they come in and sign it, their, their card's not getting turned on and then the, the purchasing of the card, I think that would be next August for the school year. Is that what you're thinking, David?
I don't necessarily say it has to start at school year, just give time.
Is it, yeah, is it a, is there summer access typically?
But it's still in the evening. They don't change the hours because we use the gym most of the day just with activities.
So if they came and read the agreement and paid the $100, they'd have a reactivated card?
Yeah.
Gym only?
Is there agreement on, I'm just writing down cost violations, penalty. Cost that I'll shoot to lawyers.
I think $100 is fair. I mean, could be some flexibility on payment, I guess if it needs to be.
And violations will just be misuse of facility. Not limited to, but including jumping on measures.
Propping open doors.
Propping open doors. I think the biggest thing is for everybody to understand that if this doesn't fix it, it can go away today, but it's going to go away.
So you need to unleash your buddies to play. Tell your kids, use your card.
And penalty is card canceled for a year. $100. Violation, misuse of facility, penalty, card canceled for a year. Anything else in that? Gymnasium only?
And they may have some specific conditions too for us that, for how not to be.
Yeah, I'd just like to give them a framework and see what they think is.
And we're still staying with Eric or her.
That was another thought I had is whether seniors would be something we would allow trust to, with siblings to give responsibility.
How old were our performers?
Sophomores, juniors, freshmen. I don't think there was a senior in that, was there? I don't think they were.
No, I am.
Well, I mean, there's some.
So you want to continue parent or company?
Parent or parent guardian. I mean, it's something. Right, well, yeah. The grandparent wants to take their grandchild into the gym. I, I feel like that should be.
Especially if we're going to remove the card.
I guess I would kind of hold it up against like a swimming pool. I mean, a lot of times parents would be there with their kids or go back them off and leave. The difference is it's staffed or if we're not.
$300 seems awfully expensive just to play with a kid for a year. I didn't know we need teeth in it. Guess what you could see?
The other, I don't know if you want to include this, but the other issue in, it doesn't matter either way, but if a parent brings only their kids or can they bring their kids and their friends? Because that's, that's happened. They bring four or five kids.
But are they staying?
Well, some parents follow the rules, but not many.
Right.
And I.
I mean, because that's the other, that's always the conversation is, you know.
I don't want to punish kids for playing basketball. That's silliness.
That's fantastic, yes.
But, I mean, if a parent wants to bring, I just something you need to think about because they'll ask.
Right. And I, I'm fully on board with if, you know, a parent wants to bring three kids to come down this year around. I don't, I don't feel like we should be dissuading them from doing that. No different than, you know, you want to take your niece and nephew down. Well, with currently written, is that a.
I think we're assuming, we talked earlier about liability with your parent bringing, but I think as a district, we're assuming liability regardless as long as there's kids in there. I don't. we're assuming liability regardless as long as there's kids in there. I don't think. You having Bree's kids or David's kids is going to increase the school's liability on what happens. It would increase liability on you. But I don't know that.
Reliable is to have one. And I, I agree with that. And that's kind of why I think, you know, if we're going to look at changing some of this, we're going to really make some ground rules here.
And I would share with you that David Cunningham from KSB recommended against having groups unless the kids. Let's see, I'm gonna make sense out of this. So the non-parented kid, their parent needs to sign a release for the other parent who's present to take them. And that's where we said, that's gonna be a paperwork nightmare. That's never going to work. So he did feel that there was some issues with parents having non-custodial kids, if you will. But I want to share that.
But if a coach wanted to have after hours if some of the kids are on his team and he wanted to go and then work with them extra, would the coaches employed by the school, so that would be okay, correct or not?
Well, that would technically need to be an open gym shoot around and every athlete should have the opportunity. Not, I'm gonna take my three and take them in and really work with them.
They would have to let the entire team know they were going in. Is that how that is?
Well, this summer time they do a lot of small groups, but they're designated small groups like toasts, guards. We were meeting at this time, this time. So that's not unheard of, but just to pick, single up certain kids, that is probably not okay.
I mean, because then, I mean, you move it down to the youth level, you know, you've got different youth teams and they're not employed by the district. We've, we talked about that last time too, you know, let's say you've got some, I don't know, infielders and you're working with your middle infielder or you're working pitchers and pitchers where, you know.
But I think at that point, they can come in and request like a facility use, right?
The department does.
Right. But like if there was an M A Y B team and they wanted to request use for practice, that would be something outside of what we're talking about.
So you would, you would deem that a practice, not a small group, right?
They fill them an application for use of facilities and then it's approved by the principals, make sure nothing's going on in the gym and it's signed by the superintendent and sent back to them. The department has that a lot.
These access cards are a seven to ten P M. access card, right? Is that?
Yeah, I don't know the exact time. I know it's after, okay, I don't know what the after, the after evening time is. And then weekends are, is it all weekend? Do you know, Britta? I don't know what the times are. Eight?
I'm not sure. I think it's maybe new to eight it might be. I'm not, I don't know.
Yeah, I'd like to see you go back to KSB and get some.
Can we make a nine thirty curfew that is also a violation or something so that they're not? Would you say that video was ten after ten or they didn't leave the last?
I think it has a time stamp on it.
They were there after ten o'clock.
It was after ten, I was thinking it was after ten. Currently, we have no way to force them out?
No.
No.
And that was the night the door was locked open and janitors came in in the morning and it was cold in there because the door had been, the towel got caught.
Yeah, it was the winter.
It was freezing. The heat ran all night with the door open.
Can you tell when those doors are shut the last time or not? That there's really no, this is the only way we knew that they timed out. Okay. I was thinking if there was a way to know when they timed out, you would know they were after nine thirty or ten in the.
The only way would be to watch video footage and see when they leave. Which takes a lot of time.
Yes.
Well, I would say getting feedback from KSB and seeing what they have to say based on what we've discussed. And I mean, I agree, waiting until May is four weeks.
It's nice enough out there. We just slide it. We need to. Any other comments on that? Any other questions you have? Okay, all right. Uh, KSB renewals. Motion to approve KSB continued annual membership, including the season pass and utilizing the legal assistance. Add anything to that or just need approval?
Just need to approve.
Okay, David? Motion by David, seconded by Jessica, that USD two ninety-eight Board of Education approve the Kansas Association of School Board continued annual membership, including the season pass and utilizing the legal assistance services for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Any other discussion? All in favor? Seven oh? Okay. Next, we have an activities review with Mrs. Quinn and Mr. Tate.
All right, so the first sheet, um, we actually checked today just to make sure the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year head count. Head count, it doesn't go mail to mail, anything like that. But this year's was three twenty-eight, so a third straight year. So, um, over thirty years, uh, lost over, close to a hundred students. Before Mrs. Quinn was in high school, so. Been all the way through. We've just lost a lot of, a lot of students. And when I go to league meetings and things like that, that's kind of, actually I got a comment at the last meeting, uh, last Tuesday, that it's just odd for Lincoln to be going through these problems. It's what they were just saying. It's odd that we're losing this much and it's always been their school and the star league. That's kind of what, what he said was.
We've always been the largest school in our league and we no longer are.
Their schools are legal on par or are they increasing?
Increasing, some are increasing. And then the, the smaller ones are probably just saying, said here it's decreasing, there's a few that are decreasing. But there's, there's several that have passed this up. Rock Hills has actually got seventy more kids than we do. That used to not be the case.
And I think another part of it is that just the majority of our league is either, they've already consolidated with another school or kind of a standalone example. Um, but yeah, Osborne, um, I was talking to someone from there and they have thirteen in their sophomore class and they graduate fifteen this year. So those numbers are pretty small compared to our high school numbers right now. And they have thirteen less students than we do K through twelve. So, um, they have thirties, twenty-eight, twenty-eight to thirty-two, um, in that range, fifth grade. They have.
They've had an influx of young families move back and, and so they're, they're small classes. They're going out and their big classes are coming in and we're the opposite.
Um, so that's just kind of our trend over time.
Rock Hills is, um, I don't know what they, they did though through consolidation, but that was probably fifteen, at ten years ago, I would say. With White Rock, Jewel, um, Jewel actually wasn't involved. Uh, they're just, I talked to Sam and they just started, I don't know. They, he's like, I don't know what kids are coming from, but they've just surpassed us in seventy kids, a lot more kids than we have. And they've never been bigger than us. So just to kind of see our trend over the last thirty years, twenty-eight would be next, I think.
Um, and so, yeah, um, the next page is just the wrestling, um, same, uh, essentially the exact same form we gave in the fall. Just updated from this year's, um, Kasia, um, the lady emailed me. I went through and looked at the regionals. There's a hundred seventeen schools in one A, um, nineteen wrestle. So sixteen percent of those nineteen and six have their own school, own team. Uh, they do it all by themselves. Six co-op. So if, for example, if us and Sylvan would have done it this year, it'd be eight co-op together and four teams. And then seven one A schools send them to, um, a bigger school. So, um, in our league, Osborne has their own team and, um, Rock Hills sends their kids to Beloit.
Osborne had one wrestler. Rock Hills sent four to Beloit. Three of those are seniors.
So. Um, baseball, um, on the front, so there's baseball and softball from that. So.
The H L softball are pretty similar in terms of numbers, um, very, very similar in terms of schools. So, uh, just looking at Title IX.
Uh, yeah, so same thing, same. I tried to color show them all the same. So, um, you see how many do it all by themselves. You see how many do it, uh, together. I will say, um, we are the only school that two one As combine to make a three A team. So, um, all the other co-op agreements, they stay one, two A for regional baseball.
So if you remember in August, when we compete in baseball, we compete in three A regionals. So we play Minneapolis, schools at Beloit bigger than us, but we have struggled to compete against because we have to combine both our numbers with Sylvan and Lincoln, which makes us a three A school. And like he said, we're the only school that does that. Um, everyone else that combines, co-ops, so there's sixteen one A school, or no, sorry, sixteen one A schools that co-op together. We're the only one. Most of the other ones today, one A too bad. And you can look at the softball numbers on the back. They're almost identical. Just a couple other schools that have added that baseball don't have. So, I don't know.
And yeah, talked to a lot of, um, coaches, principals, administrators, A Ds, um, even some superintendents, just from one As or, you know, smaller schools. Um, they all agree it's not their fun when you're declining enrollment. A lot of them had talked about either going through it or, um, just being around as things were kept or not kept. And, um, they all agree that no fun when you're losing students. I talked to actually one last one today and he was talking about their one A at the moment, but they're going up in the next few years. They're going, they will revert to two A. And he said, you know, they'll probably want to add sports. And at that time, we will look at adding whatever sports they want. But we'll be sending them somewhere else, not picking up the cost all by themselves. So, um, to be completely honest, um, I would not look to add wrestling back or, uh, this is our last year in our co-op between Sylvan. So if, or at the end of this year, I would look at, or I would recommend getting rid of baseball and softball as well. It aligns us with our other, like the majority of one A schools. Um, our financial situation at the moment, it just aligns us with the majority of one A schools in our league. Everybody plays volleyball, football, cross country in the fall. Everybody offers basketball in the winter and everybody offers track in the spring. And that is, I mean, you can go through and look at those numbers again, and the majority, you know, that's what the majority of one A schools offer.
Yep. And I'll add in just off of what Mr. Tate said. Um, first off, he has done a fantastic job gathering data. And I would say minimum, we've spent fifteen hours probably working on this the last month. Between him and I calling, I don't know how many schools we've called within our league, um, one A schools around the state, just gathering information. So, um, thank him for all the work that he's done because he's done a fantastic job. This, we have talked, I don't know how many hours, just trying to figure out the best thing to tell you and what information to bring you because this is not, this isn't an easy decision. And nobody's gonna like the decision. And, but we have to think about what's best for three hundred and twenty-eight students and not what's best for five or ten students. We have cut or will have cut going into next year for teaching positions. And when you sit in a staff meeting and tell your staff that we have to make cuts and we have to cut over two hundred thousand dollars out of this year's budget and next year's budget and that we're going to start with staff, that's not a good conversation to have. And I didn't enjoy it. And I'm sure Mrs. Schmidt didn't enjoy it. Neither did Mr. Crenshaw. And they know, when we've had conversations with staff, they know that we have programs that are not spied. And we're looking at cutting staff before we're looking at cutting programs. That's a real issue. And that's a tough conversation to have with them. Um, we have to afford to be who we can afford to be. We can't, we have to stop dreaming that we are the two A school that we once were in the nineties. We are not them anymore. And unless something amazing happens to Lincoln, and maybe it will, and then we can have this conversation again. But until that happens, we have to start acting financially who we are. We are a one A school that has a declining enrollment. The facts and numbers and data doesn't lie. Um, the thing is, is we offer a lot of opportunities for students and we have some amazing students doing amazing things in those opportunities. If you've got to go up to the man concert tonight, there's one. They did a great job. Um, we have a lot of programs in our building that are doing great. And we can't forget that. And those cost money too. We can't have everything. We just can't. I love sports just as much as anyone else does. Um, it's probably the reason I went to high school most days. But, um, we have to remember that we are an academic institution that offers sports, not a sports institution that offers academics. And sometimes that is very easily swayed by parents and by society, but that is where we are. And we have to start acting like it. We have to be financially smart for our kids, for our future and for our school district.
Yeah, I don't know. This is interesting. I don't know that I've ever seen our enrollment back that far. And I know when we were in high school, somewhere in the two thousands, it appears we lost thirty kids. And I know activity buses went away and golf went away and some things went away because that was a very drop. I never realized it was that much of an enrollment drop at that point in time.
Yes, um, I'm sad to look at it to be honest with you.
Yes.
When I found this, I actually was looking for this several months ago for something else. And I was like, hmm, that's concerning.
It is.
I might throw in, not a lot, but I do appreciate the amount of time and effort that they put into this for the third time. But we've had this discussion. This discussion was taking place the summer that I was visiting before I started my job. And things have not gotten better since that point. And I was charged by this board to get this district financially sound. And when I got hired on, they told me, that's your job. Get us financially sound. And when I got hired on, they told me, that's your job, get us financially sound. And I have made decisions and choices that are difficult and I've shared those difficult decisions with you. And we will continue to strive toward a financial base that can be solid. And we are on track and I think we're doing a good job in every building and with every employee, understanding where we are. It's not popular, it's ugly, but I have full confidence we'll get where we need to be. But I think for the amount of time and effort, the data, I've said this a hundred times, data drives decisions, not emotions. And I think that this is a serious conversation with consequences. But I will say this, I would ask this board to get something done on this issue because we just go round and round and round and it's time.
For those of us that are new, what's average cost per season for programs to discuss?
So, well, the way it works, baseball, we host baseball, we pay all the baseball expenses. So when we have softball, they pay all softball expenses. However, we do have to transport our kids every day to softball. So baseball expenses, we are at about sixty-one hundred dollars. This does not include transportation, it doesn't include equipment, it doesn't include uniforms, it doesn't include field, we have to pay the city to rent the field and we also have to pay porta-potties for one month, it doesn't include any of those expenses.
We didn't pay that this year, just because they didn't have a budget.
Yeah, they, we didn't have porta-potties to cheer for, whatever.
Because we don't have it.
This is less.
But every year we always have to include them.
And you don't get a gate for it?
No, we don't, we don't put a gate for baseball. So there's no income that comes in for baseball, it's all expense. Uh, let's see here, I don't have, do you have the total for wrestling?
Yeah.
I don't have it. Okay, there it goes. Wrestling is about twelve thousand dollars. It does not include transportation, there is a sixty-five dollar fee for certifying scales every year. It does not include uniforms and it does not include equipment. Some of those things are hard to figure out, we don't buy uniforms every year, but we, they are in rotation. But those are approximate. These are all based on last year's numbers, not this year's numbers. Salaries can change because our salaries are based on where your teacher falls on the salary schedule, not a rule ten. So for example, the baseball salaries from last year is based on a rule ten being a head coach. That wasn't the case this year, so it costs more. Last year's wrestling coaches, or the head coach was a rule ten coach, so it's way cheaper than having a certified teacher. So those numbers fluctuate. Also, these are all based on last year's numbers and everyone knows that inflation has done nothing but gone up. So I would increase all of those by at least ten percent. And then every year when you have salaries, they go up.
Can we have a breakdown of these?
Yeah, I did them last August, I didn't make copies.
Okay. I know that the cost changes the numbers that were presented to. Still matter of having the kids.
I heard there's six to eight kids interested in wrestling from Lincoln, I don't know, Sylvan. I think they were thinking about four this year.
Unfortunately, it seems, at least the last few years, the kids who have succeeded in wrestling have been the Sylvan kids, not the Lincoln kids. So why doesn't Sylvan step up and they be the ones who pay for all this? And we can send our kids who choose to to Sylvan to do the wrestling. If they're, I mean, it seems like they're benefiting from our program, but they're the ones who are successful.
Are you thinking of sending our mats over?
I was thinking about the mats, I guess, so.
I doubt that Sylvan's gonna wrestle a Lincoln uniform.
Or blue mats, but it's possible.
I'm just thinking in terms of their success, it seems like Sylvan would then be the ones who under for a few years until we can see if we get.
Well, they could have had the program this year. When we said we weren't having it, they could have created their own program.
Because it was still the co-op agreement, right?
Uh, they, they, because we didn't have it, Kasia would have let them create their own program. They can.
And Sylvan doesn't pay us anything, I mean, we don't receive any.
They, they help with salaries, only, only high school salaries, they don't pay for junior high salaries and they only pay for them if they send a wrestler over. If they don't send a wrestler, we pay the full bill. They don't help with any other fees, they don't pay entry fees, they don't pay transportation, equipment, uniforms, nothing else, just the salary and they only pay part of it.
Do you know what that, what that is, like fifty percent or?
Only of the head coach and the assistant coach. The head, River High School, not junior high.
So if this contract is the co-op contract that's going on with Sylvan with baseball and softball, going back to that just very briefly, is there anything we could do differently there since it's an opportunity to change some things? When a contract's coming to an end, that's a time to see about restructuring anything. And then same thing with wrestling. Can we go back to the ticket? I don't know that I have any recommendations, I'm just being told the contract's ending, so it's.
Well, it's not a contract, it's just a co-op with, that Kasia says we can join schools. There's no, there's no financial contract that we have with them. It just says, Kasia says, yeah, sure, you can join forces because you don't have enough kids.
And that has to be renewed every some years.
Every two years, yeah. And they're all up right now or will be at the end of this one year.
It is sounding like, but, but these guys are paid for their positions and they have given us a recommendation. Unless we have some better recommendation to provide to them, I think we have a recommendation of where they wanna go. They see these kids, they spend time in the building and I really feel they have our kids' best interest at heart because they chose this job as a career to educate and train athletes, become coaches. So I think we should value their recommendation also, but if, if you have recommendations for them, we can hear those. But I hope you have something, somewhere to go with it.
With the fundraising, we raised sixteen thousand dollars on a week to save them originally. The goal of that, as the person who led it, I can speak to that, was to be able to save them and then have deeper conversations about not supporting those specific sports, but all sports, all activities. There was mention of a foundation, I know we do have a two ninety-eight foundation already. But to basically put in where we could help defer the cost of all of our activities, all of our athletics, so we can continue to offer as many things as possible. I understand and I, and I do wanna put it on record that I have a master's degree in education, not in coaching. And I would never say that athletics are more important than what happens in a classroom, but I think it's a part of and I think it works in tandem with. So I, I don't want anybody to walk away from any of this thinking that I don't value what takes place in the classroom. But I also know, having been a coach, what takes place within the locker room, on the bus rides, in the practice room. And I, I mean, tournaments, whatever, you can take them or leave them. I mean, I love practice, you know, that's where everything of value was really taking place. So I don't know why Lincoln wasn't having the success that they had, the Sylvan kids, but what a great opportunity for those kids to be able to watch their teammates have success. You know, I watched the Lincoln kids watch Trey win the state title, I watched the Lincoln kids watch Fritz win the state title and they won those state titles with them, practice partner right there with the state champion from Sylvan. And it altered a lot of people's lives. So having been the head coach of both baseball and the wrestling teams in the past, I will speak in support of them. I think there is a desire from people within the community to continue those programs. I can't speak for everybody, but I, I will vote in support of those programs continuing. And I, I don't have a path forward, I don't have a perfect plan, but I think there are people that if we lean on them, if we ask, just like the track committee, just like all the other things, when we ask, our community tends to step up. That's what my proposal would be, to go forward and find a way. But that's, that's me sharing everything that's on my heart and I just, I don't wanna see these programs go away for the kids in the future here.
And I understand where you're coming from. When I was in school, we had golf, we had tennis, I mean, that was a long time ago. We had a lot of things that, you know, if there in a perfect world, I would want to bring back everything we ever could have that every kid wanted. And Matthew did wrestling. And I know there's value to any of these things that the kids do. And I know there are certain kids who maybe, you know, an individual sport is, sport is better for, but I also think we need to look at the big picture for the whole school financially right now. I mean, maybe if we have to do away with these things right now, maybe in a few years we grow enough or we get enough more kids, because if we have to continually fight to get the money to fund the programs, that's gonna get really exhausting for a lot of people and everybody's, right now financially, pretty spread thin. And I will go on record as saying, my son played baseball and he loved baseball, but he said, we should have quit baseball back, he said, we shouldn't have been in baseball, we should have done track because we had awesome runners, we would have been an awesome track team, instead we were a mediocre baseball team. But, and most of those boys could have done track. And so, I mean, I, I can see and understand what your heart is made. But I also see the work they have done, that, you know, what they have come up with as what's really best for the whole school from now and maybe in a couple of years, we can get enough people because if they really wanted it to continue, some of these people maybe would have already stepped up, come up with money or plans to fund some of this stuff, rather than waiting till now that the rubber hits the road or whatever that terminology is. Yeah. I don't know, that's just my thoughts on it, I, I understand completely where you're coming from. And I don't wanna, you know, I hate to have to cut anything, but I think it's time for now that we have to. Just me.
Knowing that we're in a co-op with Sylvan like this, has there been any discussions with them about cost sharing as opposed to just paying a portion of the salary or?
They only send up like one or two gates, but no, we haven't, we haven't asked them, you know. It's been that agreement for ever and Ingrid upright, no more history of it than I do. It's always been that agreement, there's, they haven't always brought kids over, I mean, they've stayed and messed with them.
And they haven't always paid either, anything.
Right, and I, I mean, I get that, I'm just thinking, you know, they might not want programs, either it's beneficial to their kids as well if we present it in that manner and say, we cannot sustain this on our own any longer. Are you willing to help foot the bill? I think that changes the narrative completely.
I guess it, my only concern with that is, because we did discuss that, is if they don't send any kids over, we still have to pay the bill.
Right.
And then let's say the next year they send one, so they pay a little bit and then the next year they don't send any, they're not gonna pay again. And so how long do you sustain that? We still are paying the whole thing theoretically and we pray they bring someone over and they pay a little bit.
And they got best kids than we do.
Yeah, and, you know, this, I, you know, I will, did it with like these things. Athletics are extremely important, but you have to, like, you know, baseball's my son's favorite sport and if he knows that I'm behind this, he probably will be very mad at me because it's only a few years before he's gonna be a baseball player. But I also know that my son can play American Legion in K-18 in high school and in junior high. And, and, and he'll run track in the spring and, and that'll be a conversation we have and it'll be fine. He still is gonna have that opportunity, we're not taking that away from him. We still are offering sports all three seasons, we are not taking those away. We just cannot continue to thin our kids out and that's what we do. So then we're mediocre at everything. Not that success should be the most important thing, but that's what's happening. And we have frustrated coaches because we're thinning the kids out.
You have trouble finding enough coaches.
Finding enough coaches is your problem.
That's just a major issue every year.
And, and quality coaches too.
Quality is definitely a problem as well. I, 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 you know, when I was in high school here, we had, when the, when the building up there started, my, my class was the first class to go all the way through, we were seventh graders. We had three math, three science, three social studies, three English teachers. We had two business teachers, we had two PE teachers, we had a fax teacher. That's seven teachers, we cut all of those positions. We haven't cut any sports but golf and you still ask us to come up with the same number of coaches. That's really tough. So then, what do we do? We, we asked twelve people to coach basketball before we found someone and we went back to the top and begged some more. That's a problem. And we've really given our kids the best quality.
And I will add that the last time, last year when we did have wrestling, three, we had three, one graduated and the two came back. We're not, they did not go up for basketball, that's how old were that one? And Coach Batista timed for them to lift after school and moved him as well, came and so they lifted and got extra. So they still have some, I know it's not a sport, but could be set up.
I think the board needs to be aware that our staff works. There are so many of our staff members that coach three sports. They sacrifice a great deal for this district. They are away from family the entire school year for practice, for games. If it's weekend stuff, they're going on Saturdays. And, and again, how many, how many staff members do you have in your building that run everything? They sponsor all the clubs, they coach all the sports. And, and we're lucky to have them because they ought to be burning out.
Well, and our goal is to try to get, we've talked about this a lot, every, if coaching wanna coach and we've had a conversation with all the coaches, just to get them to coach two sports and have a season off. And they don't want that, there's just no way to do it. And when we continue to have these sports, it just makes it tougher and tougher and tougher.
If you're ahead for it, I would take one.
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we discontinue, talk fairly about baseball, softball and wrestling and give it rest as no longer offered. However, it needs to be worried, however.
At least second that.
Okay, we have a motion by David, seconded by Gina, that USD two ninety-eight Board of Education discontinue the wrestling, baseball and softball programs for the upcoming year. Or for, until, yes, indefinitely. Okay. Okay. USD 298 Board of Education, okay. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor? Forward, opposed, three. Okay. Motion carries for three. Thank you too for your work. I appreciate it. I know it's a hard decision. It's hard for you guys to do that. Okay. Moving on, we have our end of the year teacher appreciation from the Board of Ed.
I just share real quick. We got great survey results on that, like 42 responses, 66% wanted to keep the appreciation lunches as usual. So, Mr. Knows, you suggested that, great suggestion. We put all those options on there and, and that was the result, but it certainly gave them a voice.
So, uh, we have on here Friday, May 20th at 11:30 would be the staff appreciation luncheon. We need a motion.
Did you say 11:30?
11:30 is what I have, yes. Yes, it'd be the last day.
Yep, that's Friday.
Last teacher, last day. And the meal will be provided by the Board of Ed. Okay. Cause I would take a motion to set that date.
I assume.
Okay. Thank you, Jason.
All second.
Motion by Jason, seconded by Jessica, that USD 298 Board of Education host a staff appreciation luncheon to be held on Friday, May 20th, 2022. At 11:30 AM at the Lincoln Junior Senior High School. The meal will be provided by board members. Any other discussion? All in favor? Seven, no? Okay. Now, uh, speech credit for graduation. Return to Addendum two. What are your screen requirements?
So I um, I, in your packet, there is the speech information. What I did is I called all the league schools, which is the top part. Um, no one requires speech for graduation other than us at this certain time within our league schools. Um, and then what I did was CACIA classification with 1A, I, where we land at 1A, you, I did three schools above us, three schools below us. And you can see the results there. Um, and then I just kind of picked some surrounding schools and called their counselors and, and looked to see what they had for um, graduation requirements. You can see Lloyd Russell, that's not Minneapolis does, but they do give forensics, which is one of the discussions we had last, last month. So I put that on there. Um, I had a long conversation with the Ellsworth counselor and they're kind of in the same boat. They're struggling. They don't have a speech teacher. Um, they want to offer college credit, but to be a college speech teacher, you, it, it is difficult at this time. Um, because of the Higher Learning Commission, you have to have an actual speech master's degree, which is not common uh, for teachers. And so they're having a hard time finding that as well. They do offer ad communications and leadership as a speech credit, which uh, we actually have that class now. That's our FFA class, cause they do all the presentations at there. So um, that would maybe be something to consider as we talked about some of those credits that we can offer for speech. Um, they actually are also considering um, deciding whether to continue it as a graduation requirement as well because of that teacher shortage. Uh, I did send out an email to my staff to see if any of them would be interested in, in speech. And I did have one that said they would, would teach speech. It wouldn't be for college credit. Uh, the problem that we're having, and this is what Ellsworth's having, is we're maxed out on our class schedules. We have, you know, there's no room to put speech in there for that teacher, because they need to teach so many other things. Um, and so even having one interested, I don't know what we would do with the other classes that they would need to teach for us. Um, and then Rock Hills, I talked to Sam about Rock Hills and, and this is what he said in terms of speech. They used to require it, but when um, ELA did their standards, which would have been when it come working out several years ago. They said that they embedded speech standards into English and so they get away with it. I did go through the standard, I'll be honest with you, because English standard wouldn't mean a lot to me. So I wouldn't know if they were not, so uh, that's kind of the information I have right now on that. Um.
The board waived that requirement for the year, so we just need to know what to take for next year and we're going, going forward.
I think it's very important to have embedded somewhere, whether it's in our, through the A class. Like was mentioned.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, maybe not to the full degree of having a teacher in a class and how is tradition being done. But I think we still need to fit in the importance that would in our schedule in another program.
The forensic side of it, it's just good in today's world to get out and top all four of them. Yes, be able to communicate.
Yes.
Of course, stand up in front of somebody and be able to give a presentation.
And, and, and having it as a graduation requirement, I guess the direction I just need to know is where can we, where, where would you allow us to embed it? Cause I need that approved. And so if you're going to require kids to take French, or require them to take FFA, or require or allow us to do some piece of it in English class. Um, you know, most of all of our classes, they're doing some sort of speech, some sort of presentation.
That's what I was just going to say. Most of the classes that when I'm walking through the building, and I'm in both, uh, once a week. Uh, kids are constantly given presentations and if it weren't a graduation requirement and it were a request to be embedded. It could be embedded in everyone's curriculum in some way, shape or form. Um, and I think our staff would be very open to the idea of if you're going to give a presentation, spend a little time talking about how that looks. Um, and that becomes just part of the culture of the building is we know we have to have this in our curriculum in some manner. Like there's just presentations going on all the time in classrooms.
Cause every subject in life is kind of having speech involved.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And if we're teaching it all from one teacher, I'd be the best teacher in the world, but maybe none of our students can understand. But we can teach it from multiple teachers, multiple subjects.
It's embedded in different places.
It's embedded that the kids sooner or later in a way that they're going to absorb it.
Honestly, the best way to probably do it, because every single kid has to take English. And so if we can somehow embed it into our English curriculum, that every kid would have it then.
That was where we could.
Yeah. Because not everyone does FFA, although it would be great to get more kids to do FFA in forensics. Sometimes you don't want kids in classes they don't want to be in, when you have those selected.
Of course you have to do it.
It costs us more, so.
We're, we're running out of room, you know, it's that same program.
Yeah, that too.
As we suspected.
Yeah.
Would happen.
So it could be an option that they could choose um, to do forensics or have that through FFA or through an English class.
Yeah.
And that would kind of.
Yeah, I mean, my recommendation would probably be to put, is to look at some of the speech standards and see if our English teacher would put it in there.
But if we pull, basically we would pull the credit in.
I was already worried about that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Pull it. It's not a graduation required from Lincoln High School at this point. But make sure that we are teaching some of those standards in our English class. That, that would be, you know, kids are still going to get it. They're just not getting that credit.
Well, I'd say taking a, you know, quick moment to evaluate all of our classes and saying, where are we meeting it? I think the more often we can meet even a portion of the standard.
Right.
The better off our kids are.
I mean, I can tell you, our seniors just did the U of Entrepreneur Challenge and some of you guys not even judged it. They, I mean, they had to give a speech and they had to do a presentation and before they even did that, they practiced. And then I went in and evaluated them and, and they did it in front of other judges and they actually went and did it. I mean, that was great practice for them. Is it enough for a half a credit? Probably not, because they did it for, you know, I think they worked on that project for four or five weeks, but you know, they got it. And that's just one class. You know, there's a lot of other classes that I know are doing speeches, even in junior high. So um, it, it, I would agree, it's a hundred percent important. You have to be able to stand up in front of someone and talk and, and not be scared and, and.
Well, like in our student led conferences, if we stay with something like that, kind of hit on some of that as well. I know maybe they're not quite structured currently to be a speech, but maybe it could be.
In, in.
Restructured.
Yes.
Think about every class needs to have speech involved in it.
Something, yeah. And, and I can have a conversation with the staff. I just need to know if you want me to have that as a class and we need to put that in our schedule somewhere. Cause we've been working on our schedule.
Move on that now or?
I was gonna say, is necessary to put a class in your schedule? I would make it just involved in every subject.
I, so I mean, I guess moving forward, is it going to be, because we've only waived it for one year.
Well, that's what I was going to say. We probably need a motion to remove it as a graduation requirement and recommend that it be embedded as a.
So move exactly that.
And then do you need to move that that credit or that credit will be made up through an elective course here, reducing required credits?
Well, our graduation, yeah, our graduation requirement is 25 and before the speech was in there, we just pulled a half elective out, put speech in. We can just put that and keep the credit still at 25, which was what I would say instead of, so it's not 24 and a half.
So we would add that to our motion to replace, replace the speech credit with an elective. Okay.
So motion would make, do you need to second that?
Yes.
I'd say, move exactly that, only yes, with your addition.
Who's the first one?
Gina, okay, sorry.
Nope. Chose again.
Okay. I guess what's here, we're, motion by Gina, seconded by David, that USD 298 Board of Education remove the speech credit requirement for graduation and replace it with an elective course and we recommend that it be embedded in some other class. Any other discussion? All in favor? Seven. Okay.
Let me do the click.
No, that's all right.
Okay. Wait, more discussion.
Right.
Band discussion.
Yes, band discussion. So again, and I think I said this in the last board, maybe, maybe I didn't. You know, we had more applicants for job openings this year than probably has occurred in the last multiple years. And I want to give one person credit for that. Someone who's hip and relevant and knows how to deal with millennials and that would be Mrs. Flynn. She diverted herself away from the traditional old person, KansasTeachingJobs.com and got on apps that kids use. And she had, how many thousands of music people were you able, what was it? Indeed or Handshake or Album Tab? Or I don't know what these apps are called. But our hip high school principal was able to recruit, recruit, recruit. So we are very fortunate and we approved a band director last board meeting. Um, with that, I thought we need to have a discussion about band. We're in kind of a weird place. Uh, when I went to the elementary program, it was kind of an epiphany and I thought, oh my gosh, we gotta have band. We always have to have band, you know, some of us played band from fourth grade on. And uh, but here's the deal, we have instruments that, um, I don't know, T-Rexes may have played some of them with their little hands, maybe a little trumpet. But they are old and they are not in good shape. So what I want to do when uh, Jordan comes on board is to get a complete inventory of everything we have. Whether it's functional, repairable or tossable. But band instruments are pricey. What did we just buy that baritone for last year? Like 899 bucks or something insane. So I think that it's critically important that we try to keep this, but it's very expensive to keep this. So Mrs. Flynn and I have been talking, you know, when I was in band, schools didn't provide instruments. We rented our instrument or my mom and dad bought me a saxophone eventually when I showed them I was going to stick with it. I'm not sure, when we're talking about programs and we're talking about staff, band's going to be more expensive than any other program. And I just wonder if we need to morph that into, we'll have an instructor, but we can no longer be the rental company. Uh, what's the name? And I'll let you flesh that out a little bit.
So I had an extensive conversation with Miss Holliday and she's been working on this quite a bit. And um, there's a couple of companies that didn't really talk a lot to her, but she finally got with Tom's Music House in Concordia. And they came down and looked through our instruments and we actually, we own a lot. Um, and she, they, they are willing to come down and, and buy some of the ones that don't work or give us a fair market value for them. Um, and then also they would be willing to create a rental system for us. Um, so kind of to tell you what, what's happening is so fifth grade and sixth grade, you have to take band. You don't have a choice. Um, seventh and eighth grade, you can choose band or vocal or do both. What has turned into is um, these classes that are optional, we still rent instruments to these kids. And we have turned into a rental service, which is a very nice service to have, but I don't feel and, and that we are probably in the position to be doing that. And the reasoning is, is because these, these kids will say they're going to rent an instrument and then they don't ever pay the rental fee. Um, I never want it. Um, and then the other thing that happened is they send the, the instruments off and we have to repair them because they're our instruments. We own them and that gets extremely expensive. Um, other things that are happening is um, they come through and pick up their instruments, they'll pick up their personal instruments and they build a school for them. Well, if the kids don't pay them, then we're paying someone's personal instrument fee. And so something has to be changed up here. Um, the recommendation was to kind of, to do away with instruments we don't need, we can't fix and, and see what Tom's will give us for a fair market value. And they said they come out. They also said they would be the, our rental service. And I would say that we should probably, if you're going to, in seventh and eighth grade, by that point, you've taken band two years. You either need to rent your own instrument and you're no longer a rental service, or you need to buy one. And we need to do away, because it is costing us a lot of money.
We don't have, we wanted to do that. And can I add one more thing? Cause Mrs. Holliday and I have had this discussion quite a bit. Another thing that she brought into this is a lot of those instruments were purchased at secondhand stores and garage shelves and things like that. And so to produce any air quality out of them and sound is extremely difficult. And the flutes and the trumpets especially, she talked about, a lot of students get frustrated and give up because it's really hard to get any quality sound out of it. And so she thought that there would be more student success if they had better quality instruments that they could play long term. So that was another factor in that discussion.
So I just wanted you to be aware of what was going on. I, what I would like to see eventually, and we'll continue to work through things with this rental company. You know, when we hand a kid a $900 horn and they talk about not having any skin in the game on an access card. You hand them a $900 horn and they don't have any skin in that game. We can suffer some serious losses on repair and it is expensive. So I would like to continue to flesh this out uh, with Mrs. Flynn and with Jordan. And come up with some sort of a deal where maybe uh, this music company uh, takes ownership of all of our instruments. And they take ownership of all rental and collection of rental fees and liability for damage. And whatever they do with whoever chooses to rent an instrument through them.
I, I will add, like, if we continue to off, require band as fifth and sixth grade, I mean, we are going to have to have some sort of inventory of our own instruments. But it doesn't need to be as large as it is, because it's, it's excessive. Like um, Miss Holliday, well, she's like, I can't believe some of the instruments you guys have, so.
Well, and I think keeping it as fifth and sixth grade, we, we need to have our own inventory. Because those kids are going to go through a few different.
Yes.
Instruments.
Yes.
Allowing them to try some things out. But we probably, I mean, keep the better of whatever we have, see if Tom's can service it. And then like you said, let them purchase everything else.
She's, there's, she said, and I'm not real major musical, but like to keep just for the business, that you're just your bare basics. You know, some of your humans, some of your brass and that's it. Um, but she's, we, my understanding from her is that we have things that we don't have any business with.
Oh, me.
Um, no one can play it.
I wouldn't teach it.
No one, yeah, that's possible. No, I don't know, but um, that, we just don't need to have those, some of those items. So we need to get down to, narrow it down to what we need and then keep it simple for those, those two groups of kids.
And maybe even just for fifth grade, I mean, I know when Alyssa was in sixth grade, they had a shortage of instruments. And we either had to purchase them or rent them. And we weren't given a choice because. Because such a large class and the classes above around the high school were large and we just didn't have enough.
And we can flesh that out too. Fifth grade's a great experimental ground. And if you feel you want to pursue it on, then maybe after fifth grade, that becomes a personal pursuit.
Well, and I could, my memory may not be serving me well with this, but I'm thinking when I went through school that we did that. We could use the school's instruments, but I remember when I got to junior high and I decided to continue, I had to purchase my instrument.
Yep. Like I still have it. You're right. That's how it was when I was.
It sits on a shelf.
I think actually it was fifth grade. We start band in fifth grade when we were in school. In sixth grade, we wanted to continue. We didn't have to take it in sixth grade. The only difference now we have is we make them take it in sixth grade. And part of the reasoning is, is we have nowhere else for them to go. We need another teacher and we just don't have that. So we make them take it in sixth grade and then, so we're going to have to require those.
Can you hear the potential for a board band maybe? Anybody else?
Yeah.
I had a problem though.
There you go. We just want to keep your price to that moving forward.
How are, how are other schools handling this?
I can find out what grades they require it. I can find that out.
And how they're handling the instrument possessions.
Yeah, I just, with the cost thing, I just can't imagine anyone's being a rental service.
No, I don't. So, and are they in line with? So are they assigned?
I don't, Tom, she had called numerous people. One was in Wichita. I don't remember the company names she told me, but I don't remember. And Tom's was really the only one that showed interest in, I was small of a school.
I've worked at two 1A schools and I have a child as well in the 1A school and neither of them provided instruments. We paid for it ourselves or did a medical agreement starting in fifth grade.
But I will say the band at the elementary school, the whole program was unbelievable. It just touched this old man's heart. They were so good. The band was, and the vocals and the, they had keyboards lined up and third grade played keyboards. And it was just like, oh, we gotta keep these things alive.
But that's what the老師's money.
Yep, exactly.
Well, at some point in time, you have to push some of this on. Your parents have to be responsible for some of their hard work.
Very quick. Okay. We have a number eleven. More discussion. Summer school discussion.
Yep. The elementary school has identified some kids that are in need of some extra support in the summer. And what I'm asking is that you approve that Sharon Luke will be the lead teacher. We will identify two other certified teachers and two pairs, but we would like to have this approved. It will be paid for through either at-risk funds or ESRA funds. But we need to get it solidified, get it on the calendar, know where we're headed. So we can't wait till May.
I would note that we have Sharon Luke as our lead teacher for summer school or summer program and start working on getting that set in.
Okay. Thank you, Jessica.
I'll second.
Thank you, Nate. Motion by Jessica, seconded by Nate, that USD 298 Board of Education approve hiring Sharon Luke to be a teacher. Two other certified teachers to be determined and two pairs to be determined for the 2022 summer school program. Any other discussion? All in favor? Seven of them. Okay. Admin reports.
I apologize for being late. I was at the high school band and vocal concert and they did a wonderful job. I just wanted to say thank you again to all of those who volunteered. I have two of them in this room at Maritown. In 20 years of being in education, it is probably one of the best experiences I've ever had with students. And I am looking forward to that program continuing because I think it was beneficial to the adults, to the students, to everybody who went. So in, you were talking about students giving speeches. We had interviews with a television station and I was watching the weather report that was done from a student. So just some wonderful things. Thank you to all of those who helped.
And I didn't realize it's just our school. When we, when you presented that, initially wasn't it, were the schools, was it because of COVID?
Well, they can combine schools if they don't have enough. We just happen to have almost 25 and do that. And actually, any school in the entire state can go. You just have to pay a larger cost if you're not in one of their 29 counties that they serve. So we're just very lucky to be out.
Thank you for putting that together. Kids just thoroughly enjoyed the day. My fourth grader talked about it for two days.
It was fantastic. Being there, just seeing the kids was.
I have just a couple of things to add to my principal's report. So this is our enrollment form for the high school. It's a fee. And one of the fees that we charge is a towel fee. And you are charged a towel fee if you take PE class and you're charged a towel fee for any sport that you take unless it's a spring sport. And what I would ask is that we remove that towel fee and add it and add a planner fee. Our kids need some serious help with organization. And back in the day, we used to have planners and the school provided them. I can buy a planner for $3.25 if I order before May 1st. I've talked to my staff and they would love if we had planners. It started with junior high and we're using us hall passes. And hopefully, you know, are there negative sites to some of it? Yes. Are the kids going to lose them? Possibly. They'll have to buy me one. But I would like that. And so if you go back to the towel thing, I'll just kind of tell you how this works. So the towel fee, when they come enroll, if they're in a PE class, easy, five bucks. Are you going to do football? Eh, maybe. All right. Well, let us know if you do football. Well, are you going to do a winter? And we don't, we don't follow up with that. It's just, it's a nightmare. Here's the other thing. Our towels are about the size of a hand towel and they are so thin. And it's no fault to what we order. It's just what it is. And most of the kids don't shower, which is another issue we might have that we need to address. But they, I don't, and I'm not positive. I think that, I'm pretty positive the football team takes towels to their away games, but I don't know that any of the other sports do. Most of the kids just bring their own. So I just think it's an excessive fee that we are charging our parents that they're not getting their money back for it. Because like I said, a lot of kids don't shower. So I feel like they would get a lot better use out of a planner and skills out of a planner than these very thin, very thin towels. Should have grabbed one. I brought it. So that's what I would, I'd ask, and I don't know if that's, I assume that's an approval thing because it's a fee sheet. And the reason I ask that is because I really, or I might just, if I can just order the planners and you guys can decide on that towel thing, but I just want to order before May 1st and I get them way, way cheaper. So.
Is there any other activity fee, like sports? Is the towel fee the only thing they play to participate in?
That's all we charge.
Well, I'm growing up, we paid, it was like $50 a season or whatever it was.
There's some sports that we do. So for example, I brought several months ago the girls for the football team. I mean, they're going to have to buy those now. Girls volleyball, they provide their own shorts. We don't provide them. Most, we do have track shorts, but most of the kids don't wear them because they don't like them because they're floppy. So a lot of their uniforms, their parents are providing. So do we charge a fee? No. But they have to buy things that we probably didn't buy when we were in the school. Trying to think. Yeah, those are probably the only sports. I would say baseball, they, we only provide a jersey. They have, they bring their own pants.
And at the junior high level, is there a sports fee?
Just the towels. We don't charge a spring towel fee. Just, just, just fall and winter. And like I said, the winter one is just such a, you know, parents are coming through that line and you're going to do a winter sport? Eh, or the kid isn't with them. I don't know if Billy's going to do it. Let me know and I'll pay for the $5 as well. That doesn't always happen. So, and it's no fault to anyone. It's just something that, of the hundred things the secretary has to do, that not always gets done.
Yeah, because it's a fee issue, the world needs to take some action with the motion to replace the sports fee with a planner fee.
Is $5 enough? Is $10 something that would be better to put in there so we don't have to adjust it in the future?
Well, so this is, we will still provide the towels. We do have buckets in our locker room. We will still, for the kids that don't bring their own. But I'm just, for the vast majority, kids bring their own towels. So I would say that if you see a adult come through for towels, we are still going to buy towels. If you want to include, can keep it the towel fee for maybe PE and not for sports, that might be a suggestion. I guess I would say can we include the planner fee on the textbooks? Just add $5 to the textbooks for the planner. They'll get one first day of school and after that, if they lose it, they have to buy another one. I'll order a few extras.
Are these going to be personalized? Like are they going to say Lincoln Junior High School or?
Well, I can get them personalized, but they cost more. Yeah. My thought process was to give them and then the first, given the first hour and they have sharpies and they write their names on them so they don't steal them from each other. I know kids wouldn't do that, but.
Never.
So then the planner stuff, you'd be $55 then?
You actually can put like your calendar in there. You can put your handbook and stuff, but for every page you put in, it costs money. I mean, if you want me to personalize them, I will.
I still have one that's personalized.
I know, I still have one too. Again, going back to the good old days.
Yes, and you remember, and I'm going to get the same little one, yes.
We had planners and it was part of, when you went to enrollment, you got your planner. And to this day, I go everywhere with my planner because of what we had in school.
Yeah, it really started in junior high, a junior high tool. And actually, our fourth and fifth grade have planners.
And we use the same company they do. Ours are just larger because the little ones don't work as well, but they're the same format.
Yeah.
And we'll buy those again next year.
Well, just to clarify, your recommendation is to get rid of the sports fee, the $5 sports fee and add $5 onto the textbook fee. So actual total money's not going to change.
Right. The one I would question that I need, I guess, advice or what you guys think would be the PE fee. If they take PE, do you still want to charge for a towel? I'm not going to say no kids use the towels because there are kids that use them, but I don't, can't give you a number.
We need to continue so we have some.
I mean, how many towels do we go through? Do we replace them every year?
Usually Grace calls and says, you need towels. And I walk down there and I'm like, yeah, we have a couple stacks. We might need a bag. And then she orders them and we get them and mark them 298. I don't, you can tell me how often we order towels. Once a year, probably?
We order them from the correctional institution and so we have to order them in advance. And so then they, they send them and they come, dozen in a bundle.
They're present towels.
Right.
I mean, I would say adding $5 to the textbook fee and keeping the towel fee is not an astronomical change for anybody.
Right. Like for PE or do you want it to be like scratch the sports one or keep the sports one?
I have many, I guess we have a decent amount of kids taking PE, including weights, so.
Yeah.
We could probably scratch the sports and keep it at PE. I'm enough to cover a bunch of tallies.
Yeah. So all junior high kids do PE. Not sure, so they all shower. They probably should. All freshmen take PE and then you have all your weights class.
Nobody stands there anymore and they have to holler if they shower. They're not going to come on.
No, no.
They were gone.
So $55 textbooks and fees, then the sports fee becomes PE fee, $5.
Yeah. That would be fantastic.
I would make that motion.
I'll second it. Motion in a, let's see. All right, I gotta get to the right page here. Motion by Jessica, seconded by Jason, that we add $5 to the textbook fees on the enrollment sheet, change sports fee to PE fee? Is that? Okay. And everything else will stay the same. Any other discussion? All in favor? Seven of them.
And I have one more thing to my principal's report. Sorry to stress this out too long. So we have started state assessments at the high school. And I was sitting in, watching one of the high school groups take their state assessment. And I, a student took literally 10 minutes to take their state assessment. And as you all know, that's kind of a reflection of our school and how well our state assessments are, how well we are judged on if we are a good schooler or not. So I started thinking. And the, the, when I was at the military school, we used to give a, an award. And I hate to say that we need to award kids to do the right thing, but sometimes if there's no skin in their game, they don't care. Especially once they get to high school. So what I am proposing, and I haven't talked to the staff, I didn't want to take much of their time if you guys were in support of this, but is to have some sort of incentive. So already we have the early out incentive that we do. When that started, it used to be tied to state assessments. The problem with state assessments now is it takes the states so long to return the state assessment results. So it's really hard to put them with the early out. So what I'm thinking is, is so six, seventh, and eighth, 10, and 11 all take state assessments. And they all take two, at least two, some take three. What I would like to do is, and I would like to talk to the staff and see what they feel is a fair amount. But when they all take them in the spring, the following fall, all those kids would be back the following fall, is to give them some sort of like day off. You would not believe what they do to get early out. They will go to the ends of the earth to get that. It's very important to them. So my thought was, is that, so every class takes two. So if they get, if they do well on the first one and whatever that measurement is, maybe it has to be, they have to get a four or three. I don't know. Like I said, I want to find, and I'll have a proposal. And then if you do good on the second one, they get that full day off. So it's either a half day or a full day, depending on both class, both tests that they would potentially take. For the two grades that take three, which are junior high grades, we would do two out of three. You got to get X out on them. I was thinking like the day off would be maybe like during buffer week because we don't have any activities. It would impact junior high during that time. They could come back. We just make sure we wouldn't do it during like a game day. Like I said, I hate to have to entice them, but sometimes if they don't care, it doesn't help them, they don't do it. So I guess I was wondering what your thoughts were on that before I go and present that to the staff and kind of get feedback from them.
So a separate, separate day off than what we're talking about with the tins?
Yes. That seems to be one thing that high school and junior high kids love is not having to school. I'm just hoping that it helps them understand the importance of it more. You know, we have a lot of kids that do awesome on it and they try their hardest and do everything that you ask. But we have some kids that it's not for them, so they don't try. And the ACT score, that's important to them because it gets them into college. It gives them scholarships. The state assessment doesn't get them anything.
Yeah, if you figure out it doesn't really do anything, then there's really no right or wrong measure.
You know, in elementary school, I'll tell you, my son, he's in fifth grade and he told me he had to take some tests on the way to school. And I said, you understand how important those are? You know, it tells, it tells how good our school's doing. It tells how good your teacher's teaching you. Yes, Mom, they told me. Okay. So the next day or two days later, he's like, I got another test today. And I drop it off and I said, okay, you know, I know, Mom, it's for the school. So like elementary school, they still get it. They still care. Sometimes as they get older, not so much.
I'd be interested to see what the teachers think about that. And I think it's enticing for the kids. But do the teachers really think it's going to make that big of an impact?
I actually think some of those kids. Some of them, it's not going to matter. You're right.
They're just not going to do it either way.
You're right, 100%. I did actually talk to several teachers. Actually, did I talk to Mrs. White? I talked to several elementary, or sorry, middle school teachers and a couple of high school teachers. And they thought it was a great idea. So that's how we used to do early out. And they thought, not so, there are still going to be kids that are going to struggle throughout no matter what we do. But the kids that do do a good job, we don't always take the time to reward them. But the kids that do do a good job, we don't always take the time to reward them. And then the ones in the middle that maybe would do good, but they're like, eh, maybe we can snag some of those and pull them on our side. I, I would like to get the entire staff's opinion, which I would like to bring back, but the, the few teachers I talked to were word paper of it. So, I mean, is it something that I can bring back next month after having a meeting with my staff or is it like absolutely don't, not interested? I guess is what I'm asking.
Say we're open to the idea, get some feedback.
Okay, that's, yes, okay, that's, that's my mind. I don't wanna waste anyone's time.
Alrighty. These mics seem super sensitive tonight for some reason. I'm getting a lot of reverb or something off the back wall we usually don't get and I'm a long ways from it. Check, check. I got a two pager, so hang on and we'll go for a fast ride. So, school finance, there's a lot of stuff going on in the legislation and a lot of stuff is up in the air. If you read the newspaper a few weeks back, you'll see that our county valuation went up one point nine million dollars. That does not bode well for us. Every time our valuation goes up and our student population declines, it looks like we have more valuation dollars per student. So unfortunately, well, more fortunately, if you're just bragging and people don't know us, we're a very rich county because we have over a hundred thousand dollars valuation for every student. I think it's a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for every student in our district of county value. So, we did, that will affect our budget, our, our valuation going up, it will affect our funding. Don't know what that'll be until we go through the budget process, but the richer we get, the less money they think we need, richer evaluation. The tech building update, I've been meeting with architects. The first one that I met with gave us a bid of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, which I thought was way out of line. I have had a meeting, two meetings with Bruce McMillan and he and I talked today and his bid is six thousand dollars to do the architectural and, and what the architect has to do is a code analysis for a school building, transitioning industrial building to schools. They do a code analysis. They make sure that the plans are stamped and ready for the fire marshal for an educational facility and and you just have to have an architect put his magic stamp on there. I do have a meeting tomorrow with another architect, but Bruce McMillan and I have been working pretty good together and things are looking good there. Here's the things that have to be done. So we have to build a firewall between the apartments and the instructional area. It needs to be sixty feet wide and twenty-four feet high. It has to be structural steel studs and two layers of five H inch fireproof sheet rock. We need a two-hour firewall separating, so, but I have to have architect specs on that before I can get that bid out. We have to have a fire alarm system and that's being designed right now. It has to have pole stations at both egresses and possibly one in the downstairs apartment that we're gonna start out as a classroom. Fred Malocod is working on that and, and finding the code if we need three pole stations or just two. We have to have an air evacuation system for the welding booth. We have to build two ADA compliant restrooms out in the shop area. We have to put concrete on the south end where that south entrance door is that will allow a wheelchair to go up there, spin in circles if it needs to before the door. So a five-by-five pad, a five-foot sidewalk to a pad that's big enough for a handicap vehicle to come and unload and, and stay on concrete everywhere. So, none of this is a big surprise to me. It's just the process of converting an industrial building. So I know there were some questions about budgets. Until we get bids, I don't know. I don't know, but it's why we've overraised money and why we will continue and I have some more kind of cards in play if we need to continue down that road. The goal is still to try to be open in August, August fifteenth. Everybody knows what the goal is. The architect, engineer, and everybody's working at a fevered pitch to try to make that happen. We had a KSD food service review, so they came and did kind of an audit. They observed our food service. We worked with them to stay in compliance all the time. It wasn't a penalty thing. It wasn't a, we caught you doing anything. It's just an overview and they tell us how we can be better, make sure we're doing everything to, to maintain our funding. We did go through some budget numbers today and with this reimbursement that's at a higher level because of the free lunches, we currently have an eighty-eight thousand dollar balance in food service right now. Just to give you an idea, the year I started, we transferred forty-four thousand dollars out of the general fund into food service just to make it break even. So again, for us, COVID wasn't the worst thing in the world. It's between Essar and food service reimbursements, we've been able to take care of some things that never would have happened. So we don't know, next year, the talk is, there will be no more free lunch and everyone will have to go back to paying for their meals. We have no idea what prices to bring to you yet because they haven't decided what the reimbursement rate will be, but that will be forthcoming. Hopefully, we will have more activity in our applications for free and reduced lunch because we lost a lot of funding without having that required document this year. We lost a high density at-risk waiting. We got zero dollars this year. And that was part of our funding issue, so maybe if we get back to the paperwork that needs to be done and we can get those numbers lined back out. For our summer food program, we're looking at operating that May twenty-third through June thirtieth. Those are the times that we can still do a curbside pickup of a lunch and the next day's breakfast. After July one, it has to be a sit-down community. They can't take it to go. So I don't know if we'll continue much after that or not. We really don't have plans in place for that. The curbside really worked well for us to get out two meals at a time. That's, that's an ongoing evaluation. KISA, we are in year one of our second cycle of five years and we, I submitted our documentation to the state, but I wanna give a huge shout out to our district leadership team. Ashley Farney, Eric Tate, Miranda Watson, Renee Crenshaw, Kelly Obermuller, Sawyer Potasik, Nikki Flynn and Denise Schmidt. We worked a lot because it was a twenty-four-page report that we had to submit to the state for our year one. Our outside visitation team is coming May eleventh to review our documents and that should be an easy, just a check-the-box kind of a thing. But we're, I'm excited to have people, again, a lot of people do a lot of work outside of their work. And, and the DLT, we split the thing up, people took responsibility, we shared a Google Doc and just people started filling in information, filling in data. And we met a few times to go over it, but we have a great team and they're, they're doing a great job. If you'll remember, a while back, we, we purchased more, increased security cameras. Well, with the supply chain being as it is, they are starting to install those tomorrow. They're supposed to be here at nine or nine-thirty tomorrow and start installing more cameras around the junior, senior high school. Parking lot, I talked to the engineer today. We should have those plans complete by the end of the week and then that project will be put out bid, out to bid. We have an opportunity with Mrs. White here to possibly teach a computer applications class in the evening through Salina Technical College. I think evening classes are a great way to get our buildings open to the community. It's, it's not a high school course, it's an adult course. High school kids could take it if they wanted to. But I, I really feel good about our partnership with Salina Tech and the, the growth possibilities. It could really turn into a neat career redirection for some people. We had talked about whether we try to make that course sort of a Microsoft certifiable or if there's any other credentials that people can get out of that. If we could get that kind of program at the tech building with welding or anything else and have some evening adult career redirect courses, it's just an exciting thing. Every, everything about that partnership is, has been positive and I'm glad about that. I would like to show you, if you could kill those lights again, please. You may have seen these on, you may have seen these pictures on Facebook because I share them with the track fundraising committee. So, track renovation is out trying to buy us some time and they started cutting out the patches. And I just wanted to show you the disrepair under the track, or should I say the degradation that's under that track. That base is absolutely useless. They are going to try to fill those cracks and then they're gonna try to put a patch on top of the track. When they started tearing this up, Mike Dixon is the owner and his son Ben is over there working with, with the crew and he was like, I, I don't know if I have enough material in my trailer. He said, we, we didn't know this extent. So I just joked with him. I said, hey, your dad's been here twice and he didn't tell you, you need to talk to dad. But it is in serious bad condition. So just, it just reemphasizes the fact that that thing, there is no fix that can fix that track. We might get a year or two, possibly three. These patches are the exact same thing that were on it before and you saw how they weathered. They are guaranteed to crack apart in the next twenty-four months. That is the guarantee of this patch. But it will get us back to being able to do something on there. The smaller cracks that are just split, they're just gonna fill with a filler, more of a liquid-like filler. I wish I had a picture of some of the patches that are done. This morning when I talked to him, he's about a hundred and ten meters or, I guess it's yards on our track. He's about a hundred and ten yards around the track, three hundred yards to go. And, and some of these are twelve inches, some of them are eighteen inches. He just has to peel it back and see how far he has to go to find anything solid to work with. So, just wanted to share that with you. It truly is a dire need if we wanna have a track. So that brings me to something else. Our high school, let's see if I'm going the right way. Our high school is deemed the new school. I don't know if you know that. People talk about, oh, the new school. The high school is twenty-seven years old. This is the custodial mop sink in the commons. Bob Lovelace is trying to repair some of this with some of that plasticky shower liner, you know, that you might see at a quick trip. They put them on the walls or whatever. But this is the kind of degradation that's going on in our new school. So, I think if you would look at the tile in the commons, if you, every mop sink in every closet is like this. If you remember the pictures of the restroom when we were talking about remodeling that, the sheet rock is rotting away in our public restrooms. The building is old and it has not been maintained and buildings do not get better with age. So now we're, we're, I don't even know how to strike, other than that is unacceptable. You know what that looks like? That looks like basement issues at the grade school that's how old?
It was built in fifty-seven.
You know what I mean? Our twenty-seven-year-old building looks like in areas, it's an abandoned facility. And if we don't take care of these facilities, there will come a tipping point, just like that track, where somebody says, you can't use it anymore. So I wanted to share those with you because part of our strategic plans, part of our strategic plan focus as it's developing, although the tech building kinda put a slowdown on it, is a strategic plan for facilities. We have to figure something out. Essar has been a lifesaver for us with our HVAC. And, and as Essar three continues to roll through, there are twenty more units on top of that high school. We've only replaced three. There's twenty more units on that high school that are twenty-seven years old with a lifespan of fifteen. So, that HVAC needs to continue to be updated with those funds. I'm gonna throw a word out there that I've been told never to mention, but I'm gonna tell you. In order to come up with one point two million dollars for that track, which will probably be one point three next year and two million in five years, I think the board needs to start pondering, and I'm saying taking action. The board needs to start pondering at what time would this district look at a bond issue to cover the financial issues that we have with facilities. If that track's going to be rebuilt, I cannot in good conscience recommend that we go in debt five to seven hundred thousand dollars. Five, Mr. Betts presented that, that there's gonna have to be some skin in the game. We cannot take on a debt load of a half a million dollars on a lease purchase. Not when our goal has been to get to financial stability. We cannot live on debt like that. The other thing, and I, I'm not going to put the amount of effort that it would take to do this unless directed by the board, a complete financial analysis of the efficiencies and the savings of one campus. And that would be building an elementary school at the high school location. I showed you a picture of that concept at our strategic planning meeting. A track, a second gymnasium so that we're not traveling across town, and an elementary school. If we, and we will have to, move to a K-12 administrator model, that's not gonna be very doable in separate buildings. It's gonna be challenging. And so the efficiencies of looking at a one-campus location in food service, in transportation, in shared staff, in para support, in secretarial support, in custodial work, in heating and cooling efficiencies with modern structures. The high school needs what's called a soft remodel. It's overdue for that. So, when you talk about that funding model, that B-word, I would say ponder the effect over time of where we wanna be in a decade and see if a soft remodel, which would be LED lighting upgrade, flooring, paint, things like this, restroom repair, added to an elementary building, to a gymnasium, to a track. I consider myself financially savvy. I don't know how that stuff can be done without it. And here's my thought. If we did this complete massive spreadsheet on efficiencies and combinations and money savings, I would be curious to know the mill levy for a bond that would raise mills? The savings could be offset by lowering our LOB mill and I don't know what the true cost of bond would be without that. Say, say a bond added three mills, but we could reduce a mill and a half or two mills, then the cost of the bond is one. You see what I'm saying? The net effect. Because those savings would be real and realized. But I'm, I'm just giving you a big picture. In ten years, I probably won't even be alive. But, but this community, that's the vision that the community needs for our schools and for our kids. Something to think about because the more I dig in, the more things that are just like, ah, eh, you know? Had the paint been bubbly and they put on the guard or that, that plastic, great, problem solved. Now it's a mess and we gotta cut out sheet rock and we gotta put in green wall and I don't know why there wasn't waterproof sheet rock to be there to be. And I don't know why there wasn't waterproof sheet rock to be there to begin with. Maybe that wasn't a code in ninety-six or whenever it was built, but it's sure code now. But it wasn't done, so now we have a falling apart new school in a lot of areas. You saw the restrooms, you've seen the tile floors all cracked and heaved in the commons. It's just ongoing and ongoing and ongoing. So I just want you to think about that. The window gaps, the library windows, the hundred and twenty thousand dollar fix with the knee wall. And, and part of those efficiencies could include things like, maybe at some point the board office does move to the library because libraries are shrinking. Maybe that is the campus of USD two ninety-eight. Consolidation and efficiencies. There's something to start pondering because nothing is going to get cheaper and nothing is getting better right now with our facilities. And they're becoming quite a challenge. So just a thought, wanted to throw it out there. That's all I got. All that positive. But understand, those kind of processes, those are multi-year, those are multi-year projects. It's not like, hey, give us a financial analysis, we're going to see what we can do in May. This is a multi-year process. But, but I think that the board needs to be aware of where, where we truly are.
And with that, um, we are ready for executive session for personnel. Start with twenty minutes.
I just moved the board executive session for twenty minutes.
Okay. David?
I'll say it.
Jason? Okay. I have, uh, twelve. Motion by David, seconded by Jason, that USD two ninety-eight Board of Education going to executive session at nine twelve PM for twenty minutes with superintendent for the purpose of discussing personnel matters for non-elected personnel and that the board return to open meeting at nine thirty-two in the Board of Education conference room. The executive session is required to protect privacy interests of identifiable individuals. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.